Okay, I call to order our special city council workshop meeting. The second item on the agenda, discussion of our 2018 draft budget.
I will make you aware that even though I'm involved in the review itself, the hard work's done by Kim, I'm putting all the numbers together for review. So I want to recognize Kim and her staff for doing a good job on putting these numbers together for us all to review. I think we have some spreadsheets we're going to put up on the screen.
They're up there.
First, before I get to that, just out of point of interest, this is not saying good or bad, but if you take the expenditures of the general fund, and I'm going to round these off, 11.9 billion, and you take out the CIP tax, which doesn't go into general fund, but it passes through, and add in the fire department revenue so that the fire department is a standalone department, but add it back into the general fund like it is in most cities. Twenty-five percent of the general fund is the PD budget, and 22% of the general fund, if you put it back into the general fund, 22% would be fire department. So roughly about half our budget, general fund. Now, it doesn't include public works, this is just a general fund, it's police department. Another point, our way to look at it, is the police department, fire department budget is roughly 5.5 billion. And if you take out revenue that's generated by the ambulance service, court revenue, grants, and the expenditures that are not tied to revenue sources predominantly generated by those two departments, your expenditures are 3.6 million. Our sales tax, not the CIP, but our just our regular sales tax that goes into general fund, we're projecting next year 4.9. So 73% of our sales tax revenue, which is our predominant source of revenue to operate the general fund, goes to police and fire. So it tells you, police and fire is a big investment for our operations, is all that that's telling you. If you look at the general fund, at the bottom, all the way to the right, the second column, back over to left, it says FY 2017. Year-end fund balance, we are projecting $478,511. So that's what we're projecting now for the end of the year on September 30th. So that will be our starting balance in FY 18. The expended, the revenue that we are projecting for the general fund is $11,929,367. Budget expenditures would be $11,879,984. So our expenditures would be 49,383, less than the revenue. So we actually have more revenue than we expenditures. So the year-end budget would be roughly $50,000 more than the starting. So we're not spending more than we're taking in, it's a balanced budget.
It's a good thing.
Yes. If we could go to the next one, the fire department. The fire department, several years back, the fire department was separated out from the general fund. Most communities our size, it's rolled into the general fund, but here it's treated as an enterprise fund. So fire department does not make enough revenue to be a standalone department, it always will receive money from the general fund. So on this budget, the, including the transfers from general fund, the expenditures will be $2,563,839, including transfers. That is the amount of revenue they would receive. So fire department would start with a zero budget and end with a zero budget. The next one, the, is the public works authority. And if you look at FY 17, this year we will be spending $105,000 more than the revenue we take in. So we are spending more this year than we were taking in. But then next year, we will start with a $69,188 budget. Our revenue is 8 million, and our expenses are 8 million, so our end-balance would be the same. So our revenues and expenditures are equal. Some comments relative to this. I don't think we're out of the woods yet, but I think we do have some great improvements. I think the mid-year budget adjustments, while painful, were effective because we were going, and we were, at one point, it looked like we were going to spend about $700,000 this current year than we were taking in. So with the cutbacks we've done and some other things, I think they were effective. Some of the general fund revenue, we have to remember, is one-time money. The selling the easement for the gas line at a recent meeting, that was $90,000. Well, we won't be selling an easement every year, so that's one-time money, we have to keep that in mind. Sales tax, we project just over 1% growth in the sales tax. We're still being pretty conservative as to what we see our sales tax revenue growing. We are getting sales tax now from Amazon. Goodwill will be opening next budget year along with Taco Bueno. The new Mississauga is open, the Japanese restaurant is open. The only thing that I'm aware of of significance that's closed is Hibbett's. So it looks like we will gain some sales tax revenue. Employing merit increases, while we don't have a cost of living increase, we go through a process every year, and depending on meets and exceeds evaluations, you can get either a one-step, two-step, or a three-step increase. It's pretty rare for anybody to get a three-step increase, but we do have some that perform to get to two-step. And then the other employees get a one-step. Those merit increases are built into this budget that you're being presented, so we can fund the merit increases that our employees have earned. I will, on planner and economic developer, we have, in 2017, there was a combined position, planner and economic developer, but there was a second position called planning coordinator. We eliminated the planning coordinator position and used those dollars to create a standalone planner and a standalone economic developer. So we went from two positions to two positions. We didn't create an additional one, but you know when you go from a planning coordinator to a full-fledged planner and economic developer, it does add some costs, but it did make up most of it. And we are working with Logan County Economic Development, and it looks like we're close to merging those two operations. And we should get approximately $30,000 from Logan County Economic Development or more each year to go towards funding the economic development position. So those are some of the highlights. We can go department by department, fund by fund, or we can address questions. Pleasure of the city council. And between Kim and I, we will try to address questions, and we have, of course, the various department units here too, if we need them to chime in to help answer questions.
Couple of generic questions on the merit increase. So satisfactory performance generates a step one, or a one-step merit increase, is that?
I believe, is that correct, one-step satisfactory?
Yes.
And then meets is?
Meets is one, exceeds is two.
Meets is one, exceeds is two.
Exemplary is three.
Exemplary, and that's hard to get.
Okay. And then back to the fire department. What was the rationale that caused us years ago, apparently, to separate that out?
That was Matt, what was Matt's last name?
Neither.
That came from Carmel. When he was city manager, he made that decision. I've never worked for a city that's done that, so I don't know what Matt's rationale was, so somebody else would have.
It was an effort to, since we had outside revenue coming in from the billing and property tax contract with EMS district, he was wanting to try to show transparency in where those outside revenues were coming in, that they weren't just coming into the general fund, and somebody could say they were getting spent here, getting spent there, that they came into the fire budget, they stayed in the fire budget, then everywhere else. That was his whole rationale on that.
So was that primarily EMS?
That was the main reason. Because fire really doesn't generate much revenue to speak of, very little.
Okay. So does it cost us money to have it this way?
No. No, it's just a bookkeeping situation. And as the chief indicated, it would show that you weren't co-mingling the money generated by outside payers and users of the ambulance service, that it wasn't being co-mingled and used for other purposes. It does show that all those revenues collected are being used by the fire department, but the fire department will never get to the situation probably where it generates 100% sole revenue. So what it does is you have to transfer money from the general fund over to the fire department. From a cost standpoint, it's no different than if it was part of the general fund. It doesn't add anything to your cost, it's just a bookkeeping procedure.
So what is it we normally, I'm sure it says here, what is it we normally put in from our budget into the fire department?
We transfer.
You look at the fire department.
I was just transferring from general fund.
Yeah.
1.3 million.
Yeah.
So by half.
So I've got a question about the ending of your balance. You know, we're on a, what, end of year, September 30th?
Correct.
So for an example, if we look at, we look at GPWA, and you know, this one in particular, because we're $105,000 in the red on it, at the end of the day, we spent $105,000 more than we had for that division. But yet, we start with a positive balance of $609,188. Where does that come from? Or am I reading it wrong?
No, we started with a balance of $714.
Oh, beginning year.
Less the 105 gives us the 609.
Correct.
Okay.
So the 105.
Okay, I see. So that's set, that 714 is just carryover.
Correct.
It has been from year to year to year.
Well, that 714 was the ending balance of 17.
Seventeen, seventeen. So that's why, then, I guess that's where my confusion lies, and we're not showing it on the other, because we don't need to, right?
No.
So every year, we have an ending, a positive ending balance?
Yes, we should.
So we don't operate off of a zero-based budget then?
No.
Okay, because I always thought cities operated off a zero-based budget.
You always try to have reserve funds that you carry over.
Okay.
And the reason you do that, for example, in the fire department, there are things that have to be paid immediately when you start the year.
Right.
So if you start the year with zero dollars in your operating funds, you wouldn't collect enough to meet payroll in the first month you operate. So you always have to start the year with some money in each budget in order to meet your initial expenses. And a lot of times, like memberships and renewals and things are done early on, insurance, those kind of things. So the first quarter, you have a lot of expenses, and then they kind of even out throughout the year.
So that's how we budgeted, like, right now, we're budgeting that for 18, that overage that we'll need to start the year?
Correct, but for cash flow, budgets one thing, but then you also have to have the cash flow. If you budget, you're going to spend a million dollars, but you spent 500,000 of it the first quarter.
Right.
You gotta get out of cash flow, so you gotta start the year with something, and then that money's replenished as the year goes on.
Okay.
Well, and certainly, there are unexpected, unexpected expenditures, or could be, and you need, it's nice to have a little bit of a buffer.
Correct.
There.
And in our case, we have two buffers. We have the balance in each fund, and then we have the stabilization fund.
Right.
Now, the stabilization fund would be for a major situation. But, for example, with sales tax, you, it's hard to forecast sales tax because it's very volatile. It's always nice to have some reserve in each of your funds in case sales tax gets a hiccup in it where you start losing sales tax. It gives you some time to react to a downturn, like if you have a major sales tax generator decide to close their store, then it gives you some time to react to that because you have some funds built up in your departments to carry you through while you figure out what you're going to do.
And I think the opportunity to have carryover is also, gets you out of that scenario that sometimes you read about, where people are spending money at the end of the year just to spend it.
Oh, yeah, I get it fully. I'm just, it's never been explained that we budgeted from this year, the carryover, into next year.
Yeah.
Well, I'll say, I mean, this is the first year, and this is something Lee Royce brought with him.
Because I didn't see this last time we did this. No.
Yeah, typically, we don't show it, that there's a fund balance.
Right.
And that's different philosophy. I always show.
Transparency would show it, I would use.
But in past years, Guthrie didn't show the beginning balance.
Obviously, it shows in FY 15 and 16, it looks like we operated in the red, pretty much in those years.
We spent more than we took in, but you still had a balance, it just.
Just not.
Guthrie did not show that.
Right.
But now we're showing the balances.
I like that.
It just ate into that.
That balance.
Balance, yeah.
But it was quiet here last time, wasn't it? I saw that, by the way. Very quiet.
Any other questions? You want to, anybody have a desire to look at specific departments?
Is, is the PD and fire department budget such a big percentage because of our sales tax ratio, or?
No, and, and I didn't point that out to, as a negative or a positive. I think if you look at any city in Oklahoma, you'll run into roughly the same scenario. The, so we're not unique to other cities. You would see the same thing if you analyzed any community in Oklahoma probably. And it's just that police and fire departments are a significant part of the cost of operating city government. And they're a necessary part, but just wanted to make sure you all were aware of how significant a portion of our operating budget they are.
I do want to talk a little bit about, but she isn't here, so maybe Steve might be able, who's taking over for chief right now, Steve? So how is the four, because when I look at this four-day deal, 12-hour shift deal, it shows, no matter how I run the numbers on it, that it's eight hours overtime every week regardless. Is that correct? I mean, because it's, it's four days of 12 hours, right? And then, then one week, three days of 12 hours. Which still comes in at eight hours per paycheck in overtime.
Well, but remember, police and fire, by the federal labor standards act, are on a different pay arrangement.
Yeah, and it's not a problem that I have, I want to be real clear about overtime, I get as much overtime as I want.
But, but police and fire, it's not a 40-hour work week, it is a two-week cycle. So overtime's created by the hours that you work in a two-week cycle, not a one-week.
That's why I said, 48 hours and 36 hours, you've got a net eight hours over.
Yeah, well, but it's not created.
No, because they do it on the two weeks, not the one week.
Yeah, so, so is it 84 hours for police department?
One week, you've got 48 hours, the next you've got 36, that's four hours.
So police department has to work 84 hours.
I'm sorry, for a month, right.
On a two-week cycle before they get overtime.
Well, the question I have is, how's that working out? Because what I saw last year is, we blew throughout the overtime pretty fast through the, for the front end of the year. And I was just wondering, how are we, how are we going to curb that? How is that working out in the general population of the police force, they like that?
A lot of events that we have.
Yeah, you gotta be there.
I think there's a, there's a combination thing, but I don't think that the overtime situation was created by the shifts we're on. I think the overtime situation was created by a series of things. One, when you have turnover, there is a significant lag time even after you hire or replace a police officer because they've got to go to CLEAT. Then when they come back from CLEAT, they've got to ride with another one to go through a training program on the job training. So there's a lag time when you get that officer replaced. Well, you've still got to have manpower out in the field, so you're eating overtime to backfill where you lost that officer, even though you've hired a replacement, because they're not out in the field yet. In the past, we had three school resource officers, and the philosophy was, under prior administrations, if a school resource officer was gone, we backfilled that position and made sure somebody was at the schools, well, that created overtime. We backed off of that some now, and if we've got school resource officers that aren't there, unless we have to have somebody at school for a special reason, we don't create overtime by backfilling that slot if they're gone. There are many situations where one event can tie up a police officer, his whole shift. If you've got somebody that's got a DUI, and there is an accident.
Oh, I haven't seen that.
You've got the hospital and all the paperwork at the time, and sometimes it is necessary to backfill, because if you got, you got two officers on the street, and one of them's tied up on one event the whole shift, then you got one guy out on the street. So there was a lot of overtime created through a variety of situations. Special events, I forget how many hours of, just 89 event, that's probably our biggest one as far as police overtime. Every time we have an event where we have to have officers in intersections, control intersections, now, I think we've come up with some themes to maybe carve that down a little bit this next budget year, but because of those factors, we will always have an element of overtime in the police.
And so my question was, how do you, do the officers in general like that? Because we approved that at one point, what, two years ago?
Yes.
Okay, and I've never been able to ask this question right at this point. Do you guys like it? Or is it something that, I wish we never went to that, or, yeah, it's awesome?
I think.
I mean, there's a prime example right there, officer on the street.
Love it.
Do you? See, that's key, because that's key in also getting retention as well.
I think, I think there, there's a mix. There are some that like it, some don't. And there was talk about in our labor negotiations this year to look at some modifications to the work schedule, but internally, our bargaining employees looked at it and determined there was not a better way to do it, and they withdrew that discussion because they said they wanted to stick with the work schedule we have right now.
So with the next thing that I would have, and that's great, that's all I wanted, was to see, it's probably a split, nobody's going to love everything. But, so now that we know that there's going to be an exorbitant amount of overtime potentially because of the different factors, specifically events, that type stuff, because then, how are we compensating for that in this budget?
We have added additional, we've added, working with the chief, we've added what we think is an amount for overtime that will cover us for next year. One of the things we did last year in last year's budget, we, we tried to cut overtime, and I think we were unrealistic in the number that we put in the budget.
So we're a couple hundred thousand dollars more, is what it looks like we had?
Correct, we've increased, we've increased overtime. I can't give the exact amount, but.
That was the question.
But we have increased the amount of overtime budgeted for this year as compared to what we've budgeted.
Yeah, because that was a big concern last time, when we were going to run out of money.
Yes.
And still, Steve might be out there on a 12-hour deal with some crazy lunatic, and then we got an event going on.
There is no guarantee. I mean, you could have a tornado, you could have a flood or a major storm, but we have worked with each department administration to try to come up with a realistic overtime number for both police, fire, and even streets and public works.
So the increase.
To let them have input into what that budget should be.
So the increase from 1.1 million to 1.3 million, a couple hundred, 170, 80 grand, whatever it is, that's probably all overtime, or majority overtime?
Overtime and the merit increases.
Okay.
I've got a question on wastewater treatment plant.
Yes, sir.
15 is just 377,000, 16, 373, and 17, 372. How much of that is going into keeping things fixed that are constantly breaking because that thing's so old?
On a water treatment plant?
Wastewater.
Wastewater, or the wastewater.
Do we, do we have a figure on that?
I, I don't know that there's an exorbitant amount of maintenance because of the age of the plant, but because of design and the type of plant we have, we can't meet the, and the volumes that we treat, it makes it difficult for us to meet the threshold.
Well, like that, now, when we get a lot of rain and stuff like that, we're going to do it again.
So it's not, we just, one, we can't keep up with the amount of water going through, wastewater going through. Number two, the, the type of treatment process that we use is not the type that allows you to meet the, the standards, you know, our fluid that we're discharging, those standards get more restrictive all the time. And the new plant that we will go to is a different treatment process that should help us be able to meet the standards that we have to meet just moved on.
Now, do you agree with that new plant and the way that it is constructed? Because I know you weren't really here when that all happened.
I've not had a chance to fully review that. I've been here six months now, and I've done two budgets, which is kind of unusual.
We had to, you're thrown into the fire.
What I plan to do is, after our retreat Thursday, and we adopt this budget, my focus will turn to the wastewater treatment plant, and I will look at that and do an analysis of what I think of what, what we're doing as far as the type of treatment plant we're looking at, and also the type of disinfection that we're using, because whether you use chemical or electrical, ultraviolet disinfection, those are different operating costs. And so I plan to spend some time looking at that. I've just not had time to do that yet.
Two departments that I think do a superb job, but a question about the increase from 17 to 18, streets and parks. Is this, can you, do you have any specifics as to why we're looking at, if I'm reading this correctly, about? about a, about an eighty thousand dollar increase in the streets and, and about fifty or so thousand in, in the parks? Is this, is this part of merit, of merit increase, is this, uh-
Tenny's expensive.
I would have to go through and look at that to see-
From, are you talking about from the estimate where they're in?
Yeah, seventeen estimate, and if you look at the amended, look at the amended budget, are you looking at that? No, I'm looking at the seventeen estimate.
Now, keep in mind that the estimate, we, we cut a lot of expenditure line items.
Look at the actuals for four fifteen and sixteen.
Yeah.
That's really nice.
And I know in one line item in particular for the street department, the sidewalks, I think he usually budgets it around a hundred and, not just sidewalks, sidewalk streets, usually about a hundred and seventy thousand.
Let me point a couple things out that might help address. One, street departments did a lot of work this year at the airport. And so the materials they were using was being paid for out of the airport fund that is split between Edmund and Guthrie. So those expenditures weren't coming out. Also, when we got into the budget crunch before we did the mid-year review, Tenny and his crews were in a position to forego a lot of expenditures, rock and materials that we really didn't have the opportunity. If you look at police and fire, their expenditures are predominantly hundreds of employees. Whereas in parks and streets, it is a lot of materials. And so they foregone a lot of those materials. And this year, to help us adjust the budget to get it back in compliance. If you look at the amount that they've spent in prior years, well, you can only go without your rock so long and then it starts affecting all of your road to improvements and those kind of things. Well, if you look at fifteen and sixteen, you're still less in those two departments than what you spent in FY two thousand fifteen.
So looking, so, so using two thousand seventeen, what we expect their total expenditures to be, which is that second to the last column, is right, isn't necessarily the right parameter to use for the proposed-
Correct, because we had them clamp down very tightly on what they could expend in order to get our budget back along. Is that a fair-
Yes, and roughly, I'd say roughly three months of our, our current year we're in right now has been spent to banner school, the disc golf, and the airport, and projects that do not entail actual material costs, just fuel costs. So whenever you're spending majority of your time on projects that's just fuel cost and you're not eating into your material cost, or all of your time is spent at banner school or on a dozer out clearing for disc golf, then you're not in that, that line item. So, okay. That, that's how we was able to really clamp down on that item and really helped us through the-
Through the tough time.
Through the tough times. I'm kind of fortunate there, actually.
So now it's time to buy some rock.
Well, yeah, you can't do it forever.
Where, where are the savings coming from on building services for its budget? We're going from an amended of ninety-five thousand to forty-six thousand?
Um, we have moved employees around.
So is where you've cost it, you've changed the costing of some staff?
What we have done is, the, one of our positions, we have moved to parks in, in the winter time, when they're not as busy in the parks, then we will use those individuals to do building maintenance. So we've shifted the timing, we will concentrate our building maintenance to the degree we can during the slack time of the park crews and try to, what we try to do is consolidate efforts where we can instead of having one person just dedicated something, if there's slack time, then we can move them over here to do this. Now, that won't be as easy as if we gotta dedicate a person, of course, but we think it will work.
Back to Jim's question on the wastewater treatment plant, or maybe not his question, but that line item. How can we push that when we don't know what we're gonna be doing there? I mean, we have, I know we have to put something there, right? I'm talking about the total expenditure that was proposed at three hundred forty-three thousand. That is, we don't really have a breakdown of what's broken pipes or, you know, popped out nuts and bolts, whatever on the deal versus what it just is running, you know, with no trouble. But where I'm going with this is, if we're gonna start on a new wastewater treatment plant, or maybe what I'm hearing is maybe we're not, depending upon what your thought process is of what has been proposed, right?
Well, even if we start tomorrow on the wastewater treatment plant, from an operating standpoint, you're gonna be another budget year away before you-
So it'll no way to lower it in eighteen anyway, right at this point?
It, probably not, as far as the operating cost.
Okay. And it should be lower anyway, I would think. Maybe not.
Not, not based on predictions.
Yeah, so that's what we gotta look at.
Correct.
Current, current maintenance, just a number, maybe a little bit finer number for you guys, roughly about fifty thousand maintenance is put into the actual plan itself. About seventy thousand's put into the lift pumps to get the waste to the plant.
Okay.
And most of that, I mean, a pump alone is, is close to ten thousand, so that's five pumps, if you have five pumps, go out.
About much money?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, are we budgeted for fixing this Harrison deal? Is that in the budget somewhere?
That will have to come out of our CIB budget.
Okay. So it's okay to spend capital improvement on a basic maintenance item like that?
That would, a bridge replacement or removal would be a capital expenditure. As well as a, the improvements to the city, what you was saying.
Correct.
Anything that has a life in twelve, fifteen years is capital improvement.
And drainage would be involved in that also.
Correct. That would be a capital improvement as well.
Okay, how much money we got from Amazon so far?
We cannot give out specifics on thirty-seven, any, any of those.
Twenty-six fifty.
Give or take a few cents.
But it's a plus.
It is.
It's a plus, yes, so that's, that's good. Why aren't we allowed to give all specifics on tax monies that we've brought in?
In order for us to have access to those state records on what individual taxpayers pay in sales tax, we have to sign an agreement that we will not give out individual taxes or we lose access to those records and can't hit them for management purposes in the future. So that's dictated to a state.
So Amazon looks like a singular payer because they're paying on the behalf of fifteen, eighteen hundred people in the community buying something on Amazon, myself included.
Correct, but the way that the report would be with them as a taxpayer.
Okay.
Lower, just keep buying.
Hey, it's the way to go.
Yeah.
Appreciate the Amazon Prime!
So, if, the, the thought process, do we need to have additional work? We will have a budget hearing, but at this point, unless we are different, do we need to have any more work sessions or discussion with the city council? Or are you all ready to move forward to the next stage and schedule a public hearing and look towards adoption of the budget? Or do we need to have more meetings with council relative to the budget?
Sounds to me like we're pretty, pretty comfortable with what's, what's been presented here.
Like it's ready to go.
Given from the, not a whole lot of questions.
I just, I wanna make sure that we're, yeah, I agree a hundred percent there, but I just wanna make sure that, because we've been through this process before and only really one other time and it was more of a pick and a poke type scenario, okay? And then, you know, we find out halfway through the year, we're half million in the red. I don't wanna, whatever we adopt, I just wanna make sure that we're working towards continually, and I know that you're the man to do that, modifying if we have to as we go, right?
We will monitor and adjust accordingly. And there are so many variables-
Right, I can see that.
-that affect our budget. You can't guarantee anything. I, I think this is a workable budget. I still think that we have some challenges ahead when we get to next year's budget because there are some one-time money in this budget. But I think with the mid-year budgets adjustments we did, we're seeing a little bit of growth in town. I think we're in, going in the right direction, but we're not where we need to be yet. But I think we're moving in some good direction. I would like to be a little more conservative, but I think our employees are entitled to the merit increases and I think we should push the envelope just a little bit to make sure we give those merit increases to our employees.
Retention is key.
Yes, absolutely. But I think it's a workable budget.
Okay.
Looks like it.
Well, I salute you Leroy and Kim and the staff and all the department heads because obviously they all contribute to, to making, making that balance happen. And, and we've had a, we've had a, a bit of a rocky history recently and it looks like we're back on to a smoother ride and that's good.
We'll trim it all up with Myers Engineering a little bit as we go, so that we-
I think, I think, I don't like, you, you, the fact that your department heads and, and Kim is our finance director are all to be commended, but I also think that we have to just the rank and file employees to be commended because everybody, while it was painful to do the mid-year adjustments and trying to figure out how to make last year work and to move forward to this year, so we are positioning to do this year's budget, there were sacrifices and contributions by rank and file employees as well as department heads. I think the two bargaining units that we have for fire department, police department have been very reasonable and I think they're to be commended that they recognized where the city was. And clearly, our pay's not where maybe it should be compared to some other departments and makes, makes it difficult to retain employees. But I think the employees that we have for the city of Guthrie have all pitched in to make this work and continue Guthrie moving forward to the end.
Well said, well said. So the answer to the question is in consensus that we don't have to go through more budgeting?
I think we feel pretty comfortable and, so we'll have the, have the public hearing on it and go from there. And Tenny can go by rock. And life is good. Okay, anybody else?